Madam Clark?
Oh yes, oh yes, oh yes, the Supreme Court of North Carolina has resumed sitting for the dispatch of business. God save the state and this honorable court.
Good afternoon. The court calls 249 PA 19-1 Ash County versus Ash County Planning Board. Mr. Cook?
Thank you, Chief Justice Beasley and Associate Justices. May it please the court, I am John Cook. Amy O'Neil and I represent Ash County. I'd like to reserve four minutes for rebuttal.
You're right.
The issues in this case arise from an appeal order containing 36 conclusions of law by wholly local lay board with limited appeal authority, empowering itself to stop the application of law to a final application for a polluting industry permit, and self-enabling itself to issue a polluting industry permit to an asphalt plant that will stockpile, manufacture, and transport toxic and hazardous materials on a mountain next to a perennial stream that flows directly down that mountain to the New River and an especially protected portion of the New River watershed, which is a public drinking supply that is publicly specifically regulated by both state and county law at a higher standard. The Court of Appeals affirmed this order and authorized applicants to cherry pick preliminary communications to stop local governments, extended that rule to all 100 counties, and directed them to restructure. All of this activism was unnecessary, unwarranted, unjust, and error. Applying this court's teachings and precedents, the Court of Appeals was duty bound to reverse the order and to direct the return of the polluting industry's permit to the county. The Association of County Commissioners and the Blue Ridge Environmental Defense League join and support the county in this request for this decision to be reversed. The asphalt plant has no amicus supporting its position and has not provided a response to either of the amicus briefs supporting the county. Without waiving any of the five issues this court has certified, I think I want to try to get to the heart of what this case appears to be about, certainly about in terms of the briefing. And the heart of this case is, can governments be stopped based upon preliminary communications of its staff during the processing of a permit application? And the core argument of the asphalt plant and the Court of Appeals is that reliance justifies stopping local governments. I want to direct the court to two very specific pieces in the record for the court to identify, well, for me to identify to the court, I believe, the injustice and error of this new rule. First, the source of this reliance is direct examination by the asphalt plant company's lawyers to the professional consultant and to the asphalt plant owner who has a PhD. A year after the preliminary communication of June 2015 was provided, where they testified that that was a decision, they relied upon it. The second piece of the record I'd like to point the court to is page 481 and 482, where two months after that June 2015 communication was made, the planning director prepared a report that said the application is under continuing review, and the consultant came back to him by emailing, said, "I'm surprised it was a decision." And the director said back to him on September 3rd, 2015, "It's still under continuing review." That's correct.
Before we move on to those portions of the record, let me just ask you a basic question to help me understand what something means. On page 480 of the record is the chart that was attached to the June 2nd, 2015 letter that the Planning Board, Trial Court, and the Court of Appeals all relied on in reaching the determination that you challenged. It says with respect to buffer requirements in the chart on page 480, verified survey attached permit. What does that mean?
Justice Ervin, I think what that means is that if you looked at that 150 pages of application at that point, there was in fact no survey attached and in fact no site plan attached.
Well, it says survey attached permit, and then a number of times in your brief you were arguing that there in fact never was a survey, and I'm trying to reconcile this statement in the record with assertions that have been made with respect to the existence of survey.
Well, the practical side of Justice Ervin was that they had not located where their asphalt plant was going to be on the ground, and they couldn't.
Let me, I'm trying to ask a real specific question.
Sorry.
What does the, what do the words verified survey attached permit mean?
I believe what that means is that they needed to require, that they needed to prevent, to present him a survey for him to attach it to the permit when and if it was going to be issued.
Right, so this is a statement that there is no survey?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And, and just to finish, my point is the reason on June 2015, nobody knew where this asphalt plant was going to be located was the state of North Carolina was going to determine where it was going to be located in their air, in their air quality permit. So the application was very general and very vague as to the location, lacks a site plan that even shows the basic things like where the employee's bathrooms are going to be, where this material is going to be stockpiled, where the asphalt plant trucks are going to be parked, how they're going to wind their way down the mountain to the New River where the public road is. So this is very preliminary.
Mr. Cook, is your argument that the planning director's letter was ultra-virus?
Well, it's, if it is a decision, right, of any type, and they claim it is an interim decision or something like that, then it is ultra-virus because he has no authority to write a preliminary letter that binds the government. This is very much unlike zoning law where by statute such as in the Wooton case and in the Myers case, a zoning administrator is given the authority to construe the ordinance independent of reviewing a permit application. Here, he has none of that authority. So to treat this as a decision would be treated as ultra-virus, and we get to the same point, which is...
So what were the limits of the authority that he did possess?
He had, he had the authority to review the application that came in and to make a final decision after all state and federal permits have been issued. That's it. And his authority, under the teaching of Lancaster and Morningstar of this court, is that he has little and no discretion. So accordingly, he is looking at that final application to see whether or not objectively the application shows compliance with law. And again, that is the basic principle of permitting. The applicant always has the burden to produce an application that shows the objective compliance with law to be entitled to a permit. This estoppel of the government and granting of special exemptions because alleged reliance is contrary to that settled principle. And...
Should applicants forego spending any money at all on a project until they receive final permit approval?
No, and I think your honor's question is, is directly on point in that they had to get their air quality permit anyway if they were going to have an asphalt plant anywhere in the state of North Carolina. So to say that they in fact spent more money because of some preliminary communication when they are represented by a consultant and a significant law firm, it's just, it's a path too far to go. And it doesn't have to be gone there. That's the key point of this court's teachings, is that, the key point of this court's teachings is that no governmental estoppel, limited authority of staff, presumption of the knowledge of the law by the applicant, and that governments are only identified, statutes only apply to governments when they're specifically identified, there are limitations on their authority. We never get to this factual complexity.
Is that the point you're asking us to draw, that anything, any communications from county staff that occur prior to issuance of the final permit have no binding effect at all?
Correct. That's exactly the, exactly our position. These are preliminary communications trying to assist people who really want to comply with the law. And the only thing that is of legal significance is the final decision. And indeed, that is the teachings of this court, because this is a very ordinary claim that the government calls me not to comply with the law. It's nothing new about that. And I would point out that the commissioners themselves had the same kind of concern, and this is issue four, I was talking about issue one originally, but issue four is that they did not want undisciplined decisions by this lay board. So they limit to their authority in their local charter to the act of the official, not preliminary communications, but the act of the official that's appealed.
Is it, Mr. Cook, is it your contention that a pronouncement by a person who is entitled to make a decision with respect to a permit has no binding effect unless certain formalities are provided or certain language is included in that pronouncement?
Well, I certainly think that would be the best practice in, in any permitting decision, Justice Ervin, but I think the fact is, under Lancaster, it's kind of simple. And that is, this is two-step process. You, you, you never do anything until the application is claimed to be complete by the applicant.
Let's take it out. I mean, I'm trying to leave this at some level, level of general reality at this point.
Okay.
Any decision we make will obviously have application in different contexts. And I'm trying to understand what it, I mean, you're not saying that there's never a set of circumstances under which a pronouncement by an employee of a planning department or some other local governmental agency could not have binding effect, are you?
Oh, no, I'm saying that the final denial in this case was, was in fact the decision.
I'm trying to speak, trying to speak generically so we can know how we're going to proceed here. So really, the ultimate question in your view is whether the decision, communication, pronouncement, whatever you want to call it, reflects a final determination by the governmental official or agency regardless of how it's actually couched?
I think that's, that's correct, Justice Ervin, and I would point out the Court of Appeals treated this as partially binding, which is completely inconsistent with the idea that it's a final decision.
I'm sorry, Justice Ervin. Please finish, Justice Ervin.
Go ahead.
All right, thank you. If the planning director has some decision to make and authority and has decided in terms of what he at this time had reviewed, if nothing was left for him to evaluate because the air quality permit was going to come from the state and the planning director was satisfied that any local determinations were satisfactory to him, then why would he have not had the authority at that stage to say that everything was in place, say, for that document that was not to be issued locally?
I think there's two reasons, Justice Morgan. One reason is it's a two-step process that you don't make a final determination under Lancaster until there is a complete application. It wasn't complete. And secondly, the air quality permit that was given to him in April 2016 contradicted the location of the proposed plant that was shown to him in June 2015. This is precisely the reason you don't make a final decision until there is a complete and final application before you and the applicant ask for that complete and final decision.
I believe it was the concurring decision of the Court of Appeals that said that it would be treated as a final decision if the concurrence had that judge's way. This was seen as being an estoppel, so how do you translate that to be a final decision in your argument?
Well, I think, I think the final decision is the April 2016 decision when they asked for a final decision. And I think that the June 2015 decision was not, if it was a decision, was not a final decision at all, and they understood it. And, and so if you looked at that, what was given to him in 2015, there is no survey, there is no site plan, there's no disclosure of the illegal grading that he discovers later. So that's exactly why, the only thing that is binding is a final decision, as your honor knows, being a trial court judge, even if it was a decision, an interlocutory order is not binding until a final decision. And the policy reason for that is, we don't want anybody making a decision that's binding on the government until the record is complete.
Well, at what point can an applicant rely upon a governmental official or governmental entity when there is the preliminary submission of necessary documents and there's some guidance given as to the direction in which that permit application is going? To what extent can there be reliance in light of what you said earlier in response to my learned colleague, Justice Davis's question, that the planning director here was acting ultra-virus?
Correct. It could not be reliance at all because they're presumed to know the law, and they cannot substitute what some planning staff says on a preliminary communication for their responsibility to submit an application that is final and complies with all standards of law. And that's, and the reason for...
Is, is there therefore action that the applicant therefore at its own risk?
Correct. The applicant has always got to have the duty to show compliance with the law through an, through an application that is given to a staff person that has little or no discretion. That is the teaching of Morningstar and Lancaster, your cases, so that it objectively shows it. And that's, that's the failure here. And the other failure here is, as I was pointing out in record 481, 482, and perhaps Justice Ervin was, was also perhaps pointing this out to me, there are many preliminary communications in this record. They're very hard to understand what they mean in particular context. That actual statement in 481 and 482 never make it to the Court of Appeals opinion, even though he told him squarely it wasn't a decision two months after, and they testified a year later that they relied upon it, never makes it. And so this factual complexity, which is cut off by this court's teachings, is a playground for confusion, misjudgment, and favoritism, where you pick and select certain facts and preliminary communications to support the narrative and outcome you want. And when that happens in front of lay boards across this state, they're going to be the arbiters of when other citizens will enjoy the full protection of law and when they won't, depending on what narrative they, they choose. And that's the failure under issue one. And when you rid this case of issue one, this is just a straightforward question of whether that final application satisfied the requirements of law and nothing else. And as we said, the only permit that was actually given to the, to the planning director that permitted an asphalt plant anywhere in Ash County in the final application was the air quality permit that located a piece of equipment, not the facility, a piece of the equipment within 1,000 feet of a residential dwelling.
Mr. Cook, I may have been, may have been headed in this direction, but let me see if I can, can at least understand, make sure I understand properly the way this case is structured. You just said if we were to resolve the first issue in favor. My read of the record is that we then have the issue before us of whether the planning board aired in its alternative holding that the planning director erroneously denied the permit. Is that right? So essentially, we, even if, once we get past this question of whether the county had waived the right to deny the permit application because of the June 22nd, 2015 letter, we still have to look at whether the planning board was in error because it also held that Appalachian was entitled to the issuance of the permit and that the director aired by refusing to provide it. Is that right?
Precisely, Justice Ervin.
Now, at one, I mean, I've read, I've read, obviously, the briefs in attempting to understand the arguments that you had made in the second part of the brief, which I interpret to be your attack upon the second decision that, that the planning board made in, you know, alternative to the favorable decision. What is your, you argue, among other things, that the moratorium statute allows the denial of a, of a permit application that is decided during the course of a, of a permitting, of a moratorium. If I'm understanding you correctly, you seem to say that in, in the degree in which a moratorium is in effect, if an applicant chooses to request the issuance of a permit and to insist on the denial of the permit, the county has the right to make that determination, but the only thing it can do is deny the application. Is that a correct understanding of your argument?
Correct, that the applicant would be entitled to a full analysis of the defects in his application, which would have to be a denial, and that's the point, at that point. But that gives the applicant the right to correct his application and refile before, while the moratorium's in place, and still get that new application processed, because that's what the moratorium statute allows in the moratorium, because a moratorium is limited to a, to a development approval being granted, whereas unlike, that's unlike the Robbins moratorium that your honors looked at, which was a complete moratorium on all activities. And that is the Court of Appeals rule because they misunderstood the facts in this case. It's the maximum administrative delay. That would not lead us to the intent of the moratorium statute and certainly not the intent of the moratorium. They were freely entitled to fix it.
Right, now, if you look at, if you look at the various iterations of the permit choice statute, they all seem to say in effect, don't want to get too far down in the weeds on the various iterations of the statute, but they all tend to say, if a rule or ordinance changes between the time a permit application is submitted and the decision is made, then you can, you have to, the applicant gets a choice as to whether you want to proceed under the prior or the current version of the ordinance. Why is a, the implication of a moratorium by itself a change in the applicable permit or other land use ordinance?
I apologize if I spoke over you, your honor.
No, you didn't. I was just trying to figure out if I was being clear enough where you could answer the question. I hope if you need me to try to restate it, I'll be glad to.
No, no, it was crystal clear. The reason is, the moratorium doesn't change any of the development standards. That's what the permit choice statute's concerned about, when you change the development standards. The permit choice statute does not reference the moratorium. The moratorium statute's specifically...
It doesn't, it doesn't use that specific word, but it talks about if a rule or ordinance changes, and of course, a moratorium, I think, is an ordinance.
Well, a moratorium is an ordinance, but it's an administrative directive not to issue permits, but it doesn't change development regulations. And the moratorium statute, which is where the, where the general assembly was really focused on whether you should have a moratorium applied to you or not, does not exempt this kind of, and it sets out exemptions and does not exempt this kind of case. And furthermore, the general assembly, after they adopted, the permit choice statute themselves adopted a moratorium on wind energy facilities that applied to pending permits at the state level, and the permit choice statute applies to state permits as well as the local permits. We think that is strong evidence of what they intended a moratorium to do and what they intend, why they didn't have moratorium reference than that statute. So for the reasons that I've set out in the brief, which is, the only permit locates a piece of equipment within 1,000 feet of a residential dwelling, which is never mentioned in the Court of Appeals and were responded to by the asphalt plant, because it, there was a moratorium which required a denial at that time, and they knew about it, because there was no survey, because there was no site plan, because there were two buildings, which are commercial buildings, if you look at record page 521, specifically the finding describes it as a commercial building. The only thing they say is it's not a commercial building, but they don't say what it is. And for the watershed protection permit, which is a requirement of state and county law, yes, it's issued by the county, but the watershed protection law is a state regulation under chapter 143, article 21, and the county is required to enforce it. For those reasons, your honors, we would request this court to reverse the Court of Appeals on all five issues and to direct that the polluting industry's permit is returned to the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goodwin. Mr. Moffett?
Thank you, Chief Justice Beasley and Associate Justices. Again, may it please the court, my name is Tyler Moffett, and I represent the Appley Appalachian Materials LLC. I want to start by responding just to the overall, my overall understanding of Mr. Cook's arguments, and, and to be as specific as possible, I understood him to say that until a final decision about a permit is, is made in writing to the applicant that is not a final decision, therefore does not trigger the, the requirements or the obligation to appeal that decision by any party, if the court accepts that argument, then I think that what we're saying is that the Wooton case is essentially overturned because the Wooton case is, it goes beyond that. It, it deals with asking a specific question about a specific property by a affected party and a written determination of that party's interest as to that specific question. It doesn't speak to it having to be a denial or an approval of a, of an application. It extends beyond that. So I think to accept Mr. Cook's argument would essentially be to, to overturn the decision in Wooton. So I wanted to start by addressing my understanding of, of Mr. Cook's argument. I will address a number of issues from both Mr. Cook's brief as well as the arguments that he presented. The issues that I believe are before the courts are, number one, whether or not the Wooton or the Meyer case apply here. Number two, whether the planning board exceeded the scope of its authority. Number three, whether the moratorium does or does not allow for the denial of the PID permit. Number four, whether the structures reflected on the initial application submitted by the Appley were commercial buildings. Number five, whether the Court of Appeals issued advisory opinions. And number six, whether Appalachian Materials met the requirements of the PID ordinance, notwithstanding the June 2015 letter. So I'll take those issues in, in order. As it relates to that first issue, whether Wooton and Meyer apply, essentially, the argument, and there's several bases for this, that the... argument, and there are several bases for this, that the appellant makes in their brief is that the Court of Appeals opinion created this new quote unquote "system" which expands or expounds upon and expands on the Wooton and Meyer case, and as a result of that, it conflicts with several rules of this court. For a number of reasons, I'm going to address why, why we would contend that's not the case. The, the Court of Appeals opinion-
Before, before, before you do that, Mr. Moffett, I mean, obviously, I'm familiar with, more familiar with Meyer than I am with Wooton, but this case involves a letter that addressed, as you see, of several different issues relating to this application. And the Court of Appeals, at least as I read their opinion, seemed to say that, well, that the, our analysis of the application is not complete with respect to at least one part of the, the different things that have to be shown in order for the applicant to be entitled to the issuance of a permit. We acknowledge there are some things that aren't completed, there are some things that are, therefore, it's final as to the items that it is complete, it's not final as to at least one, maybe another components of the application. Therefore, the parties are bound with respect to the components that are final and are not bound by the law that are not final. I don't remember Meyer and Wooton is involved in sort of starting the application approval process one way or the other, the one I'm more familiar with, obviously, is Meyer, which was sent a letter of interpretation that a particular house met a particular standard, and there wasn't anything more to do after that interpretation was provided. Here, there seems to be other things that have to happen. Why should the rule in the same, in those two instances be the same unless I misstated the facts at some point?
Thank you, Justice Urban, for the question. I agree with your assessment of, of the Meyer case. The, our argument is that the Court of Appeals applying the Wooton principle came to the determination that, yes, the specific issue, for example, with regard to the buffer requirements, was a determination or decision made. One distinction I'd like to draw is that the, the rule, for example, in 160A 388, which is the, the rule that controls the appeal of a decision of a, of a planning director, says a decision of a planning official. It does not say that the decision has to be tied to the approval or denial of a permit application, it just says the decision of the, the planning official. In this case, what the, I think what the Court of Appeals was saying was, the decision that they were applying that standard to was with respect to the buffer requirements in the specific example that you gave.
Do you know of any other instance in which appeals are required to be taken on issue by issue basis, waiting until an overall final decision's been made?
I could not cite one as I sit here at the moment, Your Honor.
Generally speaking, we're, the courts, at least at the appellate level, are not big fans of the derogatory appeals. Why should we have a different rule for the consideration of permit application?
Well, I think that the policy argument, Your Honor, would be that it would, it would affect the ability for a applicant to seek input on their project or their application before investing substantial sums of money in, in furthering their development or their application. And, and I think that's the policy reason behind, or we would, we would argue the policy reason behind that, that issue.
Is there, but as far as you know, there is no case in at least the permit application area that holds that this type of issue by issue appeal must be taken at the risk of waiting for a challenge decision at a later time?
I would agree, I'm not aware of a particular case, Your Honor.
So this case is different than Meyer and Wooton, at least in that respect?
Yes, Your Honor, I would agree in that respect, it is. But again, I would, I would suggest that under the language of the 160A 388, it doesn't say that the, the appeal timeline is triggered by a final decision of a permit. It says a decision, it does not specifically tie it to the decision of an approval or denial of an application.
Or it doesn't really decide what, what a decision is, does it?
No, Your Honor.
Okay. And I'm sorry, I interrupted you way too far. Please, please go ahead.
Well, Mr. Moffett, while we're talking about policy, if we accept your position, isn't that going to make it very unlikely that employees of counties are going to be willing to offer any guidance at all to applicants going forward?
That is certainly a possibility, however, what would be the, what would be the object or the point of the authority granted to those planning department officials? If they're granted the authority by their local ordinance to interpret and issue decisions or issue, you know, issue decisions on permits, then, then, then why give them any responsibility whatsoever? If, if the city chooses to give them that responsibility, or the county in this case chooses to give them any responsibility in making a decision on a permit application, then, then they are undertaking that burden, as the Court of Appeals talks about, in their opinion.
Well, do you, do you agree with the way the Court of Appeals majority analyzed it, this notion that the letter was partially binding but not completely binding?
That, that was not our argument at the Court of Appeals level. I believe that the, not to change topics, thank you, Justice Davis, not to change topics, but I think that's the ultimate issue that was, was brought up during Mr. Cook's argument of, even if the court were to determine that June 15, or June 2015 letter were not binding, there's an entirely separate issue of whether the application met the requirements of the, of the PID ordinance. And one thing I want to point out on that topic is that at the Planning Board level, the county did not contest that the findings of fact were not supported by competent, substantial competent evidence, and therefore, the findings of fact are binding upon the counting at this level. And I believe some of the arguments posed by the, the county are essentially trying to relitigate those findings of fact.
But going back to the binding nature of the letter, one of the points that the county is making is that the initial application contained misrepresentations, which I suspect you deny, but if you had a case where there really were misrepresentations, is it really fair to not give the county a chance to change its mind based on learning of the misrepresentations as opposed to being frozen in time by a letter like this from an employee?
Certainly, if it can be shown through the presentation of evidence that, that there were misrep, intentional misrepresentations made that were material to the application, I, I would agree, Justice Davis, that that, that would be a fair response. However, again, the findings of fact contained in the Planning Board level address those alleged misrepresentations and conclude that they, they were not material.
When you talk about the potential for those that are working in these governmental agencies, an opportunity to be empowered to speak on behalf of the governmental entity, be it a municipality or a county, wouldn't it have a fundamental chilling effect to accept your position that there could be the potential estoppel as the Court of Appeals found, if there is the desire of the local agency to try to encourage comportment with what the requirements are, and therefore quell any desire on the local part to try to help folks along with their permits?
Thank you, Justice Morgan. Do I think that possibility exists? Yes, I do believe it exists. Again, however, the other side of that same point is, from the developer's perspective or the person, the applicant's perspective, they're going to be investing a substantial sum of money, in many cases, hundreds of thousands of dollars, prior to be, to receiving approval of the, of an application. And it, again, seems that that would, on the other side, chill the potential investment of a developer in a county or municipality in doing development.
Well, assuming that we would agree with your position, would this be a bright line rule that you would propound to us to consider, or is this a case by case basis as to how strong that language is that may be in a letter of acknowledgement from that particular office, that there's been a receipt of permit application materials, and this is where it stands right now going forward?
I, Justice Morgan, I don't believe it would be a bright line rule. I think that the outline of factors contained in the, in the Wooton case is perfectly sufficient for this court to either adopt or, or to undertake consideration of, because those, those factors are, if you examine them, they are a case by case scenario where you're, you were asked to determine, did the person writing the, make the determination, did they have the authority to, to interpret and make a determination of the ordinance? Was it about a specific property, about a specific project by an affected party? So that, that inherently, I believe, is a case by case analysis, and I think that's the best approach.
Could that go even beyond a planning director? Could that go to someone who is in the planning director's office, or someone who is not a part of a particular statute in terms of the level to which there could be a stopple that would keep an entity from being able to be said to be bound?
I believe that that would be controlled by the local ordinance's delegation of authority. In, in this situation, the only person that had that authority was the planning director. And in many municipalities and counties, it typically is the planning director who is delegated or is, is given the authority to interpret and to, to make determinations under a specific ordinance, and therefore, I, I think it would have to be tied to the specific individual who was granted that authority under local ordinance.
So hypothetically, if there was a planning director's assistant or administrative assistant who was being locally by everyone, that if we get past that individual, then the planning director is going to take a certain position, that would not lie in terms of being able to be one that could have stopped a county or municipality?
That, yes, Justice Morgan, that is correct. It would, I do not believe that staff, as it, as it were, staff of a planning department that were not specifically authorized under local ordinance to interpret and make decisions on ordinance, on applications for permits, I do not believe those individuals would have the ability under the, under the Wooton analysis, those person would, those persons would have the authority to make a binding determination. And if I may address the one issue, that the, the estoppel issue-
Wait, before you do that, Mr. Moffett, what is the specific provision of the Ash County ordinance that gave the planning director the authority to issue binding approval before the entire application was complete?
This, the, it is in title, excuse me, through the land usage section, I, without wasting too much, I'm tired, without, without, I apologize, without taking up too much of the court's time, within Chapter 153, under planning, under the land usage Title 15, is what spells out the, the plan, it breaks out the planning authority within the county structure. I, I don't have the subpart written down in front of me.
That's fine, I don't want to take up your time, but does the section you're talking about expressly contemplate binding approvals before there is a complete application?
I'm sorry, Your Honor, could you repeat that question? I apologize, my, my computer cut out for one second.
Sorry, does the section you're talking about expressly contemplate binding approvals by someone like the planning director before the application is complete in all respects?
I, I do not believe that it's, it goes to that level of specificity, but I would direct, Your Honor, to the, the testimony from the Planning Board level where the counsel for the Appley examined the county, the county official regarding the authority issue as well. I don't have that citation in front of me, but there is, it is contained within the record.
Okay, and I was going to ask you an estoppel question, but it sounds like you were about to talk about estoppel, so I will let you do that.
Well, before you do, before you do that, let me, I'm sorry, Justice Newby, go ahead.
Okay, so, so quickly, do we need to decide if the application was complete? And if so, can you best argument from your perspective that it was complete?
Well, the argument is, thank you, Justice Newby, the argument presented by the appellant, one of their arguments is that the application was not complete, which is one of their arguments why it was not a binding decision. So I think that that argument is before the court, and as, as it relates to your second question, Justice Newby, the, our, our argument is, is that the, if the application were incomplete due to the allegation, or the assertion, the argument by the appellant is it was incomplete because of the lack of the state air quality permit. If that were the case, if that were the basis for it being incomplete, then why would the county not have denied the application when it was submitted in June of 2015? Because that, that permit, obviously in the record, was, had not been issued, and the ordinance on that issue, I think the reason that it wasn't denied at that point is that the ordinance does not state that an application is incomplete due to the lack of a state air quality permit. It merely states that the PID permit cannot be issued until the state air quality permit was issued. It does not state that the application cannot be reviewed by the, the planning department at that point. It simply says it cannot issue the PID permit until the state air quality permit has been issued.
At least my understanding of the process that typically gets used in connection with permitting of more complicated facilities tends to be, applications filed, the staff looks at it, it says, we've looked at this and we need A, B, C, D, and E in order to determine whether we can approve it or not, and there's some back and forth between the planning staff and the applicant, so that it's not really a matter of you file an application and it's either immediately that they determined to be approved or denied. Is that understanding wrong?
Thank you, Justice Urban. No, that would, that, that, in my experience dealing with permitting applications at both the county and municipal level, and certainly, my experience is more in the rural counties such as Ash County, that, that is a typical protocol for, for the process to unfold.
But you typically don't give approval till they're complete, right?
Well, there are occasions-
Try not to get into weeds on this particular application, but as a general proposition, planning officers will not at the administrative level approve applications that aren't complete, at least in the eyes of the planning department.
Justice Urban, I, the only response I would, or the only, the counter to that, I would say is that, that they would not issue a permit if it were, if the application were not complete. There are situations, I'm not saying that this, this is necessarily the case in this, this ordinance, when a application can be conditionally approved, subject to something, some other requirements, such as a state air quality permit.
All right, now, let me ask you the same question that I asked Mr. Cook. If you look at Page 480 of the record and you see the list that was attached to the June 22, 2015 letter, as I indicated in my question to Mr. Cook, it says in bold print, verified survey attached to permit. What does that language mean in your view?
I believe, based on the record, it's my understanding that the, that the planning director had done his own independent investigation, had gone out to the property, had used the GIS tax mapping software available to them to create a, essentially, a map of the property, not a survey, I'm not, I'm not alleging that it was a survey, but a map of the property and the surrounding adjacent properties and structures, and based upon the planning director's review in that regard, had verified that there were no buffer, buffering issues with regard to the application, the second part-
Based on, based on the analysis that you just described?
Yeah, that is correct, Your Honor. To answer the second part, I'm sorry-
Go ahead, go ahead.
After the comma, where the comma says, survey attached to permit, it would be, my understanding, that part of the statement was that they, that in order to issue the permit, they were going to require an actual survey of the parcel of land on which the, the facility would be constructed, but-
So they were, so in addition, so the air permit, in addition to having whatever air permits typically have, would also include a survey that would indicate where the particular facilities to be constructed in connection with this project would be located?
That would be my understanding, Your Honor.
Then that would be the official- And that would be the official designation by the applicant of what facilities he chose to build and where they were to be put, right?
Yes, Your Honor. Again, the, not to jump forward in time, but that, that there's only, there were two specific, subsequently two specific structures that the county brought up in regards to this buffer zone issue, and I, I can address those now or, or as I move through the argument.
Well, and, and at least my understanding, and I believe I got Mr. Cook to indicate he agreed with me, that we really have sort of two sets of issues here. One was, was the planning board trial court, the Court of Appeal, correct in holding that the June 15, that the county's failure to appeal the June 15, June 22, 2015 letter precluded them from challenging the issuance of the permitting further. That's issue one. And then the second issue is, assuming that the rule in favor of the county with respect to the first issue was in fact the permit properly denied in 2016, when the denial decision was made, right?
Yes, Your Honor, that's what I, I would, I would agree that those are the two primary issues.
And the buffer issue that you're talking about really goes to the second of those two questions and not to the first.
Yes, Your Honor.
And at least my read of Mr. Cook's briefs in the Court of Appeals' decision is that the, once we get past advisory opinion issues and other things of that nature, the, the principal challenge that Mr. Cook brought to the issuance of, the, the planning board's decision to require the issuance of the permit were, one, it was not error to deny the permit during the moratorium, or it was error, not error to not, I'm not backward, but I hope you know what I'm saying. And then secondly, that there were some violations.
Yeah, yes, Your Honor.
Okay. And so those are two separate things. If we ruled in favor of this Cook's position, on the first, we would have to move to the second.
Yes, Your Honor, that I would believe that's the correct analysis.
Okay. So go ahead and then talk about, the, the two principal things that were discussed in the briefs are the two alleged commercial buildings?
Yes, Your Honor.
And then talk to me about those. You were trying to do that anyway, and I stopped you.
The, the two structures are, one was a, what's called a barn, what's, what's termed a barn, and the second is what was termed a mobile shed. Again, I want to reiterate that the findings of fact at the planning board level were not, that, that, that they essentially were not challenged and therefore are binding before both the Court of Appeals and this level. So I, I want to bring that up because I'm going to mention some of those findings of fact in my argument. The, with regard to the barn, the findings of fact showed that there was, that, that the barn was not used to conduct business. Again, I'm just, I'm, I'm reciting findings of fact from that planning board decision that it was not used in commercial activity, that it had no parking, that it had no trespassing signs at the facility, there was no road access, there was no electricity. The county's tax office did not designate the barn as a commercial structure, and that the primary goal or function of that, that structure was not financial in nature. With regard to the mobile shed, first, I want to mention that the mobile shed was, is on a parcel of property owned by the parent company of the Appaly Appalachian Materials. The parent company operates a rock quarry on an adjacent, or on, on a nearby piece of property, and this mobile shed was found in the findings of fact that, number one, it was, it was temporary in nature in the standpoint that it had no foundation, no footings, that it was, had no running water, that, that it, it could be moved with minimal effort, that the, again, the primary goal of that structure was not financial profit. And based on the, the findings of fact, the analysis that the planning board undertook and was adopted by the Superior Court was that, based on those findings of fact, the idea that these were commercial buildings, with regard to the commercial aspect, each of those findings of fact about the use of those properties indicates that they were not of a commercial nature. And with regard to the building part of the statement or phrase, the, the mobile shed was, was not a permanent structure, it was of temporary nature. And so the, we would ask that you adopt the, the reasoning of the planning board, which was affirmed by the, the Superior Courts, that these two structures were not commercial buildings and therefore did not violate the buffer restrictions under the ordinance.
Mr. Moffett, can we go back to issue one for a second? I'm still struggling with how the Court of Appeals' rule would be workable on the ground. How is the county to know that a letter like this has been sent out?
Well, I'm sorry, were you done, Justice Davis? With your question? The, you know, just reading from the Court of Appeals' opinion, it does say that it's essentially on the county's and municipal governments to come up with a system to ensure that the communication of binding decisions by those with authority are somehow tracked. And I, I understand, and in the, the appellate, the Court of Appeals' opinion seems to even acknowledge that this is, is placing a burden on the counties as has been, as is discussed and argued by the amicus briefs that were submitted. And I, I'm not here arguing that it does not place a burden on the county and municipal governments. However, the, that, that burden is, is weighed against the ability of a applicant to receive some binding decision about their application prior to spending the, the substantial sums of money. And that's, I think, the balancing that the court has to undertake based on the opinion of the Court of Appeals.
But the alternative would be for the applicant not to expend those large sums of money until a final permit decision has been issued on the application?
That would be correct, but I don't know how practically speaking that would, that would work. I, I represent developers all the time, and I don't know, in order to submit a, a complete application for almost any type of permit, it requires a substantial investment of money from, from experts and professionals to be able to submit the complete application.
But how common are these type of partial approval letters from planning directors?
I can't speak as to the entirety across the states. I, I commonly ask planning directors for opinions about specific applications of ordinances, and they will respond to those, generally speaking.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moffett, and you are out of time.
Thank you.
Mr. Cook, rebuttal?
He agreed, Ross, Justice Newby.
I apologize. I'm, I'm always reluctant to say to a judge who's written an opinion what that opinion means. I'm kind of in that awkward spot with regards to Meyer and Wooton, but I'll tell you.
Mr. Cook, I'm sorry. Is Justice Newby here?
Yes, I am. My pal Cook and I went out for a minute, but I'm back.
I apologize. I apologize, Mr. Cook.
No, no, no worries. Thank you, Your Honor. I, I was just saying, I'm, I'm always reluctant to tell judges who wrote opinions what they mean, I'm kind of in that awkward spot. I think, I think Justice Irvin's question's nailed it on the head, and I would say one thing further about the Wooton cases. Wooton is, is a construction of local ordinances, and it is not some common law rule of a stopple. And when they, when, when the Appaly admitted that it's controlled by local ordinance, that's kind of the end of the day here. Our page, to our, our appendix page 40 is the authority that Justice Davis asked, and it simply says, "A permit is required from the planning board for any polluting industry. No, no permit from the planning board shall be issued until the appropriate federal and state permits have been issued." That's the only authority that he has, and he told them multiple times that's the only authority. That is completely different than the local ordinances in Wooton or Meyer, which are zoning. Secondly, this whole reason for a stopple is very simple. We cannot favor applicants over the all other people who entitled to the full protection of the law. So staff who has limited authority surely cannot waive their protections by inadvertent preliminary communications, which are claimed years later to be relied upon. I want to talk to you about, for one minute, about the, about the findings that have been emphasized. The finding with regards to the waste station, this is record 521, is its use for clerical and administrative purposes of weighing trucks and sending information for the creation of invoices to customers. That is binding on the Appaly, and that is a commercial use without question. I want to also point out that the only permit that was actually issued and given to the, to the planning director at any time was this air quality permit. They, they gave a lot of paper, but none of them were permits issued to this asphalt plant. And that one permit located a piece of asphalt equipment within a thousand feet of residential develop, develop, residential dwelling. That's the end of the inquiry. I also want to point out that there was illegal grading that was not understood by the, by the planning director in a water supply watershed, and that was never corrected under county law. That is a state and, and county requirement and another ground for the denial. As has been admitted, it lacked a survey. Also, I would say it lacks a site plan, and the reason it lacks a site plan is practical. They didn't even know where the equipment was going to go until they got an air quality permit. Consequently, they couldn't do a site plan that showed where all this was going to exist. For those reasons, the Court of Appeals should be reversed and the permit returned to the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cook and Mr. Moffett. Have a great afternoon. Clark?
Oh, yes, oh, yes, oh, yes. The Supreme Court of North Carolina is in recess. God save the state and this honorable court.